I'd like to call the North Liberty Community Library Board of Trustees meeting for the month of March to order. And are there any additions, changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay. Um, and we do not have any public comment for today's meeting? I'd like to, would someone like to call to approve January's minutes?
The date on those are December.
At the top.
Oh, yeah, it says.
And it says.
Oh, so maybe they're.
Did I put the minutes in again? Why?
Because I'm always late with them.
No, no. It's me. Alright, so we'll have to approve both next month.
Okay, approve both January and March minutes at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Alright. So on to the reports. We have a staff introduction.
Yes, Amy is here tonight with us.
Hello, I'm Amy Golly, the Adult Services Librarian at North Liberty Library. Um, I'm just going to give a brief introduction and overview and field any questions you may have about a new staff committee that has been formed at the library. Called the IDEA Committee. It stands for Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility.
Formerly known as.
Formerly known as the Jedi Committee if you have heard reports about that. And we first started meeting in February. And have since created a mission or purpose statement, which I am gonna share with you. This committee tackles DEI efforts by empowering community members to voice thoughts and needs to make the library a safe and inclusive space for all. So our initial purpose, or the way we're gonna go about this that we have outlined so far, is to utilize the Patron Library Survey that our social work student Amy Blessing has put together for us. We're going to take those survey results and which she's currently, I think, had over a hundred participants so far, which is good. We really hope that we can make that up to two hundred. So in the coming weeks, we're really gonna push that through social media. Continuing outreach to our senior community living spaces that we already go to each month. Include, including increasing our outreach to places like the pantry as well, where we'll hopefully get feedback there. We're also, we set out the surveys at the library desk this afternoon. So that people can just walk by, see a prompt, see a laptop there, and have that direct access. So we're not creating a barrier of knowing how to use a QR code to get to a survey. And we're also printing out those surveys to take to those senior community centers and the pantry. We will also, if that data we feel is sufficient in kind of giving us some idea of what community members feel is a priority for themselves and their neighbors. We might work to address those concerns immediately. We may see if we can extend the survey farther out and do some more in-depth community work. We're also looking at getting some data regarding North Liberty from other nonprofit organizations that serve our community, and we would do that by choosing specific organizations that we think we could deepen community outreach connections and partnership. So those would kind of be, that'd be a strategic move for us. I think that is the majority of what I, oh, the committee is made up of five full-time library staff, one part-time library staff member, and Micah from the City of North Liberty, the Outreach and Equity Coordinator. And so, yeah, that is currently the makeup of the committee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have about that.
So as you're making, trying to reach out to these different groups to include in your survey, is there any particular groups that you're really feeling that are, you're undersurveying, that you're really targeting, that you haven't got a response from?
Um, I think so far, we haven't done a thorough analysis of the responses that we have gotten. But in general, we are targeting areas where we know that historically, the city has low reach. So for example, lower engagement in like, Nextdoor app, for instance, is one area where the city can gauge kind of reach as far as where communications are going. I believe we've also historically used data from the city that shows us kind of where there tend to be pockets of high late water bills or late electrical bills. We're also, we are sensitive to the fact that, again, access to technology, so seniors, folks that may even not visit the library frequently, we're hoping that maybe we could get some surveys onto the Antelope Lending Library, because those are, that is a bus that frequently visits our community, like the Gulf View.
Holiday Lodge.
Holiday Lodge, thank you, yeah. So those are kind of where we're starting at, and knowing that we will probably have to branch out even more.
So Antelope Lending Library is the contract, mobile library that we've been contracting with, that one of our staff goes out with to those folks.
And then will projects be based solely on whatever you find from the results, or do you have anything starting to consider or putting ideas together?
So we have also talked about a need for restorative justice lens at the community center as a whole, but we are aware that that'll be ongoing conversations with the rec center and the library. But looking at, we currently do have a small model of that, but looking at where we could improve on that. And we think that this committee could be a good a good place to hold some of that conversation too. Pulling in people where needed, or just viewing it with a different lens from those folks who are currently like on the review board for that process.
And do you guys, does everybody know what restorative justice is?
I think you mentioned it at the last meeting, but that was in January. But if you could say something again.
Do you wanna say that or me to?
Yeah, was it Erin who gave the rundown in January about that, or no?
Potentially.
So, restorative justice is a lot of times seen as a other end of the pendulum, if you will, from punishment. So it's about calling people in, is maybe something else that you might have heard, another term you've heard. It's about creating and building relationships rather than kind of pushing, I don't wanna say pushing away, but that's, that's kind of what it feels like sometimes to the people who are put in that situation. So we're trying to build up those relationships and make our communities a stronger and safer place for everybody, rather than inflicting a punishment upon a single person.
So for instance, if we were to ask, if a kiddo got expelled from the building for some, for repetitive misconduct or behavior, United Action Freedom has done in the past, relationship building with them, and had them come in and work with UAY, and even sometimes the victim of, if it's a fight, or if something's, if someone's being bullied, they would, the victim would have an opportunity to speak about how it makes them feel. And then they would work with the person who's in trouble or who's been expelled to try to help them understand how their behaviors impact others. And then help them rebuild those relationships and fix it so that they can maybe come back in early, or just have a better chance of being able to stay in the building. Obviously, our goal is to have everybody feel welcome and, and be able to come into the building and feel safe.
Okay, so this is strictly with the library and for people who maybe have had, say, for example, like, one or two strikes where they've been disruptive, for example, and then they couldn't come to the library at a time, and so then this is a way to facilitate a conversation so that hopefully everyone could understand and come to the same agreement then, and hopefully they can come back to the library?
Yeah, or the whole building, actually. Typically, when everyone's in. If someone's asked to leave for something pretty, like, heavy in conduct, then they're typically asked to leave the whole building, and they're expelled from the entire facility.
Gotcha, okay.
And it looks different in a lot of different areas and spaces. But if you're looking for, we're actually, I'm gonna sit here and plug a program, because Amy Blessing is putting on a podcast discussion group in the next three weeks, so each Wednesday at
six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah.
I have it in my report.
Is, uh, they're going to, previously, you can listen to a podcast called Ear Hustle, and there have been like assigned episodes to listen to, and then she's inviting people from the community that deal with on various levels, folks who have experienced incarceration. And so, for example, there's a choir at Oakdale, and they will be invited, both folks who are, or I think it might solely be folks who have been.
Now it is, yeah.
Yeah, who are re-entered citizens. So, so that's like one of the groups that'll come in and speak. But so there, there will be a restorative justice one, I think, as well, that's focused on that, but.
So the Ear Hustle podcast is based on Santa Quentin, it's incarcerated, I believe?
Yeah.
Very, very cool project.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Amy? Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy's had a long day and a lot of meetings, so she's probably ready to get home.
Thanks, Amy.
Alright, uh, next is budget.
And as we almost always report, everything's in good shape. The budget is at eighty-eight percent, or should be at about seventy-five percent. As usual, our maintenance and utilities is a little high because we pay upfront, and contract services is actually only at fifty-six percent right now. Some of our databases are coming due here shortly, so that'll see a, kind of a leveling off. And then our commodities and services are just about right on target at seventy-nine percent. It's hard to believe that we are coming to the last quarter of yet another year. I don't know if anything, if you guys have any specific questions that I can answer. They are slowly getting the personnel entered, so, and I called Tracy, this is still not accurate, but they're slowly getting all that back data entered in, so that we will hopefully, hopefully, next year, have a clear understanding of where we are with our, our personnel services, as well as the rest.
And then we move on to Friends?
Uh, the Friends only are meeting quarterly, so I don't really have much of an update. They are going to meet actually at the end of this week, or they met at the end of last week, I'm sorry. I could only attend a very small portion of that meeting because I had another Zoom meeting at the same time. But they are planning to do their book sale this year, so that's exciting. We're back to having a book sale. We have a lot of books. So Andrew will work with them to get that set up. It's gonna be the first part of June. And I think I even told Andrew the wrong dates. Now that I'm saying that, well, they said June fourth, but they changed it to the next week, so. It'll be that second weekend in June, or second, end of the second week in June, which is not very far off, so that's where they are.
And then Director Report?
So, our big thing right now is strategic planning. I would say that that's one of the, and I think that the work that the IDEA Committee is doing is gonna impact how we look at that strategic plan, and some of the surveys and things that Amy Blessing has done. We've got some other surveys out and about as well with marketing and other things, so there will be a plethora of survey material data. I think we're kind of backing off because we feel like we've been doing a lot of them, but we actually have another one we want to do soon. And what we're doing this time is we'll have Becky Heil, who's the consultant with the state, who's kind of helped us with the other, the one that we did previously, which was planning for results. The model will look a little different this time. We're using the American Library Association's Libraries Transform. So it's a series of trends about libraries, and we will select from that, those trends, the probably three to four that we wanna target as main, as main areas of planning. And then we'll look at lining our goals and objectives around those. So she will come in on April eighth, which is a Friday, and spend about six hours with us that day. She's been doing a lot of phone calling, you guys know that I called out for some assistance with that. So she's been making phone calls and talking to multiple people in the community. I think she ended up talking to about fifteen or sixteen people in like different roles in the community. So she'll report all that data to us. She's sifting through it now. She said it was really, really interesting, so I'm just real excited to hear what came out of that. Sounded like it was very positive interactions. And then she will also be providing us with some demographics compared to what they were, what was in that, the results of that, and then we'll take all of that in the afternoon and start to lay out our plan for the next few years. Which, as we know, it's sort of this moving target, so it will continue to be that, a flexible plan, the top areas are priority, and and do what we think, you know, as that, we'll continue to update them and do what we think we need to do, but. I did hear from, I met, I got to meet the Las Vegas Library Director a couple of weeks ago, and they, they call their strategic plan their playbook, which I thought was really cool. So I might steal that from them. I just, and then visits to the library, the door count is finally up a little bit, which I'm super excited about. We're seeing nice, nice set of people coming in. We're still missing that, those middle grade kids seem to be the hardest ones that we're having problems pulling back in. But Erin is doing some work on that, both Erin and Kayla, and we're hoping to, that seems to be across the board in other libraries too, is kind of the youngers are coming in and, and older folks, but not, and adults, but not so many in that middle grade, middle-aged group, those kiddos. So we will hope that we'll see that improve more soon. And this is not in the report, but I will say that I, our circulation, Andrew has some information about that, but our circulation has really bounced back really well, and I heard from a lot of other libraries at my meetings that I've been to recently, that they are not seeing that kind of bounce back, so I'm, I'm pretty happy with that at our library, and you'll see that in Andrew's report. Just a note on the mask policy, we did lift the mask requirements along with the CDC and Johns County recommendations in the building, so we don't require them. All of the staff has opted to continue to wear them when we're on the floor for the most part. Right now, I'm trying to figure out what we're going to do with our lovely acrylic screens that are all over the place in our library. We, we don't necessarily want to, the city wants us to keep them for a while, but I don't know where we're gonna put all of them, because we'd like them to be gone now. And we'll just continue to, it's, it's been, most people, when they come in the library, have, a lot of people are still grabbing a mask or wearing a mask. We're seeing, I would say, higher numbers of folks wearing them than in a lot of other places where I'm going in the community, so. Which is interesting. Then I just wanted to mention, the North Liberty Community Center is doing a facility assessment with Shive Hattery, who is the engineer group that we contract with for the city. We had about a four-hour meeting on March third and a tour. I went on part of the tour, and then I kind of begged off, and then had them, when they came into the library, I went back out with them. But boy, it was a long tour, and I saw rooms and doors and building, things in that building that I've never seen before. I didn't know we had so many rooms. Shelley does a lot of the maintenance work, our rec director. She's just kind of always taken that on. And as many times as I say, I am happy to help you, but you make it really easy for me not to help you. She just kind of, I don't think she likes doing it, but it's kind of her niche, so she continues to kind of do that. I have been able to let her shift some things my way, but we did get an initial summary that is included in the packet. You guys will read it probably about the same time I do. If you have already read it, great for you. I have only skimmed it to date, but it's just to make sure that they didn't miss anything in that. We had four engineers in the room, which is just great. Their, their brains, you can just see them ticking through what they were looking for. Every crack and crevice in the building, which makes us feel very confident that they'll, they'll do a good job. It's basically, we know that this building, as it ages, is gonna need more and more maintenance. We're seeing that now. We're seeing quite a few expenses coming out with HVAC and with some of the, particularly with some of the pool stuff and other things, but those, those mechanical things are kind of taking a dive, and our roofing is due to be replaced, they are patched and fixed. They are doing some roof maintenance coming up here. The gas line people were here today, actually. We did have a snow slide in this winter that pulled off some gas lines and other things. The snow gems just didn't hold on the roof, ripped off some of the library's gutter work. So that's already all been replaced, and we'll, we'll continue to be monitoring that. And then I think they're also going to finally, hopefully, resolve some issues we've had with some bad drainage on our front, where it drains onto the sidewalk and freezes in the winter. I, they've looked at that and took pictures, so I'm hopeful that that might get some resolution as well. Super interesting to talk with them about all the things and to the questions they ask. It was pretty in-depth, so. I also included the community report for you guys to see, which Melanie did a lovely job, as she always does. With that report, I will be starting to compose after I get back from Portland. Our contribution drive letter for the Friends and the Endowment, that worked really well last year, to combine those two together. And people could then select where they wanted to donate. We continue to get some just regular random donations in the mail even now, which is lovely, and our, our community, I mean, our endowment is sitting really well. So hopefully you guys had a chance to look at that report, and you will likely be getting those letters when I get them, hopefully. I would have liked to have had them by March, but that just didn't pan out with lots of other things going on. I mentioned last month that the I would have liked to have had them by March, but that just didn't pan out with lots of other things going on. I mentioned last month that the, uh, RDG consultants, who's working with the city on their comprehensive plan, our big comprehensive plan, had met with our, um, department heads, I believe I talked about, well, maybe I didn't know because we didn't have a meeting, sorry about that. We met with this group, they're doing a comprehensive plan for the city, which is the first one we've had done in a while, and it's, it's, um, pretty exciting. We all got to give input into what we, um, would like to see happening in the city as citizens and as staff. And then we, I was able to have an opportunity, they invited me to meet with them individually for about a half hour, a couple of weeks ago, to talk about that. So I had a chance to talk about the things about the library and about public art, um, and other things that I think will help with cultural, impact in the community and give some more cultural opportunities for the citizens, as well as, I didn't really bring up the trails, but those are things that I know are gonna be coming. Um, and I did, I, I think I would encourage any of you who haven't had an opportunity to, um, look at that, it's all on the city website, and there's lots of opportunities for the public to meet and be a part of that planning, um, coming up, so if you haven't done that, it's, it's pretty interesting. And then Amy talked about the Ear Hustle podcast, but I did list it here. Just talking about the discussions to raise awareness on social injustices surrounding the carceral system. This is one of Amy Blessing's kind of, um, babies. It's something that she's really passionate about. And so she is hosting these every Wednesday, starting this Wednesday. I think they'll be really interesting. They're meeting in the library, and, um, anyone's invited to attend. She does have some special groups attending, but, um, anyone can come to that event. Or those events. Um, and then just professional activities, I was really excited. I got to go to Washington DC at the beginning of this month. I was invited to attend an, um, Institute of Museums and Library Services, uh, convening called Empowering Citizens, Empowering, um, Readers. And it, it was, um, I, that was the thing that I forgot to print today, that I sent to the printer, but then didn't print off. We had three sections to that. There were about a hundred people from all across the country, attending that event, from universities, from, big, huge public libraries. I served on a panel with the Vegas, the Las Vegas library director and the Columbus, Ohio library director, who have six hundred and eight hundred employees respectively, and, and me. It was really, it was pretty cool. So the first section of it was, um, on social wellbeing in libraries. And they had a couple of smaller libraries on that panel, actually, and then, um, the second piece was where, the next day was when I was part of it, and it was strategic alignment of library resources. So talking about how we, we direct our resources and making sure that we're looking at literacy as part of our goals, or is literacy still what libraries are about? Um, we all agreed that it was. There was a lot of very, very interesting, um, critical thinking going on in that room and a lot of brain power. It was a really exhilarating and really, really exhausting forty hours. Literally, I was in and out of DC, um, and we met at a place called Planet Word, which is about the origin of the word, and just the coolest place, and books. It's a ma- if libraries could have those things for kids, you could literally pick up a book and lay it on this, they had this whole circle of them, and you lay it down, and the book comes to life, and lights come out of the book, and it reads passages, and puts pictures around them. It was amazing. I felt like I was in a magical place. And then the last piece was, on the last day, was called Children and Reading Prioritizing Liter- or Library Development, or Literacy Development. Um, which was actually, um, also just super, super interesting. We had authors talking about data, um, to do with literacy and reading. That last person was Mary Ann Wolf, and she has, has a book called Reader Come Home, um, about just how, what we're doing to our kids, the detriment of screen time, and how mu- important reading is to development, and not only to children, but to all of us and our brains. So it was pretty impactful to listen to her and to hear her talk about this, and then to have the responses coming from the folks on that, um, group. I would, we will be doing more. I think it'll be coming up more. The head of IMLS is named Crosby Kemper. I talked to him afterward and said that I would really, really love to continue to be a part of that, and he said there's a lot of work to do, and, he would take me up on that, so I'm excited about that. Then last week was Library Legislative Day in Des Moines, so I did a trip, so I got to go to both capitals in a week. And we ended up having a really nice turnout at Legislative Day. There was a lot of librarians. I had initially planned to not go, um, just because of COVID, but when they lifted the mask mandate, I felt a little more comfortable. I did wear a mask the whole time, but, um, there was, and a lot of people did. We, I only unfortunately saw one of our le- our legislators, Joe Wocum, who's retiring and leaving us. But we typically see all of them, so I, our legislators are super supportive, but we got to talk to other, multiple other legislators, and a couple of people that really didn't know a lot about some of the challenges that are going on in the, um, library community across the country and in Iowa. So I think it was, ended up being a really, um, positive, a couple of them were just really surprised by what's happening, and I think we had some positive, um, feedback from some of that. So I hope that it was, um, will show in the decision-making. And then the last thing on that piece is just that I was contacted, um, in February by the Bundaberg Libra- uh, Queensland Public Libraries in Australia. They heard my, uh, the podcast that I was on, um, on library leadership, after doing the library, the Policies of Yes, and, the person asked if I would be willing to do a virtual or possibly attend the conference. I really expected it to be virtual, and then this morning the email then asked me to attend. Um, they've already got me on the schedule, so in October I will be flying to Queensland, Australia, to speak at their conference, which I think is just probably the coolest experience I can imagine after Washington DC. But I feel really excited and, and I'm super happy that Ryan are in the city, and everybody's been very supportive of these things, you know. It's a great for North Liberty to be out there doing these things and for people to hear about us, um, and the good things we're doing, so. I'm really stoked about that. I'm still sort of in shock, um, that they, they actually asked me to pay me, but I told them that I would just, require a room and board and flight. They don't need to pay me. Um, so that is really all that I have today, other than the reports, um, from the staff. I did, I brought both, two things. Melanie mentioned new library cards, um, which I brought. So I, I thought I'd pass those around so you guys could see. They're really pretty. They look really nice. Um, and then I did bring the legislative agenda talking points, that, and I can kind of just run through those really quick. Um, two that are almost always on there every year, when we talk to legislators, is the state library funding, which the state library has pretty much had a flat budget since the nineteen nineties. It's been, it's very, um, sad. But, so they will, uh, they, we always ask for more, um, and eventually maybe one day we will have more. Um, and then teacher librarians is always another one that we're typically talking about, but this time, I'm not just designating teacher librarians as essential staff, but this time there's a little bit more at stake. The governor's office is, um, wanting to take away the master's degree requirement for teacher librarians in schools. And so that was a big discussion that was there, uh, happening there. Um, as we know, you know, that training helps us ensure that they're picking the correct books and helps ensure that literacy is being taught, and information literacy is being taught in our schools by someone who has the training to do that. And then hometown governance asking just to keep local control of things like the books in our collection and making the, the decisions about the libraries. Um, and then finally, just the intellectual freedom, which is, as we know, what's been going on in the state, the challenges on the books and, um, a lot of concerns about. There, there is a bill, um, I think our lobbyists are pretty confident that it's not going to pass as is, that was brought forth by Jake, Senator Jake Chapman, um, that basically says that if librarians or school librarians, um, allow what he calls obscene, which he's re- trying to rewrite the obscenity law, basically, or what it means, what the definition of obscene is, that, um, we could be, um, subject to arrest and jail time for that, for giving out books to kids that he seems as obscene. So that's another, um, battle that's going on, but it does sound like that one's even a little bit too extreme for, um, some of our more, um, conservative politicians in the state, so I'm, I'm really glad that they saw reason on that. So that is all that I have on those things, and I'll pass this to you guys if you want to see it.
Alright, so, um, policy review?
Yep, so I did, um, mention that planning for results is not even, we're not gonna even look at it because it's, it's outdated, and I'm really excited to start this new process, and if anyone is interested in being more involved in that planning process, please do let me know. If anybody wants to attend that day on April eighth, during the day, you'd be more than welcome. And then, yeah, that's, that's where we are on that.
And then the mission statement?
Yep, and I did, I hope, include the mission statement in the packet. Um, I did, thank goodness. And we don't have any major changes. I did, uh, and I don't think we're ready until we get that strategic plan in place. I don't think we should really consider change, making any changes. So I would say that you guys could either, you know, um, look at a motion to just keep it as is for now, and then we can revisit it when we get further down the road. Um, but I did want to bring up that, one of the things that Kelly suggested, which I think falls right into line with what, what I've been doing in the meetings that I just had in Washington DC, um, was just to add literacy, add a component about literacy and learning to that mission, and I think that that is something. The talk in Washington is just about what's our brand? What is the library's brand across the country? And, um, you know, our brand is, for most people, books. If they hear about libraries, they hear about books, and I, I don't think that's our brand. I don't think that's what we want our brand to be. Um, my suggestions were based on, let's, we need a national initiative to train our librarians to, to deliver literacy components to everything we do. And then to have that national branding, that it's about literacy and lifelong learning is what happened in libraries. I think a lot of people do understand that, but many, many more would, if you asked them the first word, that they would say would probably be books. So that would be my recommendation, would just be to either, um, keep it as is for now, and.
So does any, would anyone like to bring forth that motion to wait, right?
Yeah, and I don't even know if you need one. We can just probably hold off, just table it. I don't know, do we need a motion to table something? I don't, wouldn't think so.
We tabled the minutes for last month, so.
And then I think the last item was the hotspot circulation?
Yes, and, um, we are super excited. We have five hotspots ready to roll out. Um, I have been collecting different, um, hotspot policies and things. Looking at those policies last week, I just really felt that we need to take this slow and be intentional about how we do this. Um, a lot of them were way heavy on procedure, not policy. They were just how much money they cost, and this is what's gonna happen if you don't return them, and, you know. And that's not what policy is, so I think what we will do is look at having just a very short, and I did find a couple of really good examples actually from Iowa libraries, um, and I got some from all over the country, um, is having just a few bullet points in our service policy on how we're gonna handle hotspot checkouts. The rest is procedural. I mean, hotspots themselves are not expensive. They're thirty-five dollars. It's the, it's the cost of monthly things, and we, and obviously we don't wanna lose them. We don't want them all to be gone. So we have ways to, number one, shut them off if, if they're not returned on time. We can track them. Um, so those are the things that we want in policy. We want our patrons to understand that we, we will track them. We won't track what they're looking at or using them for. We just track them to know where they are, um, if we need to. So I will be probably just working on that over the next month or so and, and introducing that. We'd like to have them launched soon. But the other exciting news about that is that, um, we found another company called Mobile Citizen, which is a group online that will basically, the hotspots are a little more expensive. They're around eighty dollars, but they will, they will, they only charge ten dollars a month for libraries. So we're hoping we have a possible lead, it's not, um, confirmed yet, to get twenty and have them all paid for, for the first year. Um, so we're working on that coordinating funding for that right now. Even if we don't get that funding, we'll keep pursuing it to figure out where we can get it. You know, neighbor, like Corville has eighty of them, and they go out pretty regularly. I would like to see us have at least twenty-five, um, within the next year, so that's my goal. And as that develops, I will, um, let you guys know and get that on the docket, so we can.
So the hotspot? Sorry, I forgot. Is that where you would get wifi?
Yes, so a family can check it out. And actually Jen, Jen is traveling this week, so she took one with her just to test it for us, to make sure that it's gonna work the way, and see how many devices can be on it and all those things. Um, yes, so people could take it home and then have wifi, um, so help in bridge those gaps for folks that don't have internet at home.
Okay, so, and I, I think that's it. Did we have any, I don't think we have any old business to discuss, and then, would anyone like to, motion for us to adjourn the meeting? Right, we're done?
I motion, will you adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. The North Liberty Library Meeting has been adjourned.
Thank you, guys. I hope Jesse heard all that.